Dennis had said he won't be here tonight. Vacation again, concert and things of that nature, so. Did you get the new wifi for the committee hall? Guys, okay, I changed the password, so you'll need to forget the network and then re- resubmit it. I changed it first. The reason is because we had too many people reloading on the wifi. People can hack their phone and hack into our router and with sensitive information on our computers, it's not safe. So I changed it.
Is that a capital C?
Yes.
Do you have the sound sign in front?
Hashtag sound sign.
Hashtag Bruce.
Yes, yeah. I know.
They agree. When does next time the city, how often does the city get their tanks pumped?
Get their what?
Their something tank pumped?
I'm not exactly sure the frequency. I know we just had it done. So I guess it just depends upon usage, you know?
I was kind of curious. I wanted to see if the city was having it here in the next few days or a couple of weeks, whatever. I could dump it on paper. You could split mileage instead of...
I doubt it'll be that soon.
Probably not. You can have that much room in your state? I don't know.
Yeah, I doubt it'll be that that soon.
They're out there doing doing the song times across the entire town. Oh, really?
Yeah, they're having issues with their brand new system.
Usually no brand new system isn't working right.
So before we call the meeting to order, can I like, can I ask everyone to just have like a little moment of silence for our families? And you know, a prayer for our local families that have have had significant losses in the last week? If you guys wouldn't mind? Lord, would you lift those families up to you and give them grace and understanding and clarity and healing? In the days to come, they're really going to need that. They're going to need all the support and love that they can get to understand such a tragedy. Yeah, please lift them up into your name and in Jesus' name, amen.
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 All right. I'd like to call the meeting to order here. It's August 20th, 5:30 PM, regular pumping meeting. Do the whole call and you guys can stay standing. He'll be quick. The whole call starting back there.
Cassie Newton, Tita Kaylee Newton.
With Wheeler County Soil and Water Conservation District, Brianna Coon, City Clerk.
Catherine Quick, City Council, position six.
Greg Mooney, City Council, position four.
Kayleen Herb, City Council, position three.
John Hayes, City Council, position two.
Glenn Reber, City Council, position one, Council President.
Jacob Propper, Mayor. All right, I have Duana Dodd on Zoom. So you do Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, signed by the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody want to do a certification?
I'll do it. Thanks, Sean.
Lord, help us make good decisions tonight and may calm heads prevail and good health fall upon all of us. In Jesus' name we ask this, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sean. We do have a quorum. It's all live of our members here. You guys see any changes of the agenda you'd like to make? Glenn?
I want to make one change to the agenda. I didn't get a chance to get down with three of you, maybe a supervisor I have to put on. But we've been having some issues with one of the fire trucks and I put on her, she's talking about that.
Okay. Put that under a new business then.
Yeah.
So that'll be D, fire truck.
I have a a request for a new business. I thought it was going to be D, but I guess it would be E. I want to discuss some stuff for the water department that me and Terrell feel may be a need for the future with all the water projects and stuff that we have coming up for the city.
Any other changes you guys see?
I do have a couple of additions to the authorization to pay bills. A couple of bills came in the mail that I picked up this morning.
Want to add those in now?
Yeah, you guys have it in your packet.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and I did not complete the August 8th, 2024 Dogland Mists Meeting minutes. It's a lot to write that meeting down. I got halfway through it. I just didn't have a lot of time. I literally had like three and a half days to put it together.
So strike back from the...
Yeah, they'll be at the next meeting.
Approving. We'll approve the July 23rd and August 8th then. Any changes you guys like?
I'm ahead.
Glenn?
I'm making a motion. We approve the agenda with the changes made. All in favor?
Councilor Reber, aye.
Councilor Hayes, aye.
Councilor Herb, aye.
Councilor Mooney, aye.
Councilor Cook, aye.
Disposed. Motion passes. Approval of last meeting's minutes, July 23rd and August 8th. Sean?
I'm making a motion. We approve the meeting minutes from July 23rd and August 8th, related to central training.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved second that we approved the last meeting minutes, July 23rd, council meeting and August 8th, this life and essentials training. All those in favor?
Councilor Reber, aye.
Councilor Hayes, aye.
Councilor Herb, aye.
Councilor Mooney, aye.
Councilor Cook, aye.
Disposed. Okay, motion passes. All the authorization to pay bills. Glenn?
I'm making a motion. We pay the bills as if the updated amounts that we provided. I'll keep going.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the bills as presented with the additions. All those in favor?
Councilor Reber, aye.
Councilor Hayes, aye.
Councilor Herb, aye.
Councilor Mooney, aye.
Councilor Cook, aye.
Disposed. The motion passes.
Can I just say something about the bills too really quick? I want you guys to understand what the what the refund for Dennis is for. The reimbursement for Dennis. So I had told him to get with Terrell about borrowing, about using the city truck to take some water samples into Prankville to box our laboratory. He failed to ask Terrell about the city truck, took his own vehicle and then is now asking the city to reimburse him, just so you know.
Oh, we argued. It's all right.
I know, but I'm just letting you guys be aware of that.
Dennis also came to talk to me too about it and was mentioning about some potential issues with the truck.
And that's the very first that I heard of it, but he didn't even talk to Terrell about taking the truck. And I was a little bit, you know, like, I guess it is my choice not to ask for reimbursement when I take the deposits in to the bank. But I just usually try to plan my own trip around around it so that it makes me feel better about spending my gas money to go to Prankville. But I guess I was, what I was frustrated about is that he didn't ask Terrell like I'd asked him to do first or discuss any of that. Glenn?
Maybe for now, I guess it should have discussed that discussion about before you have the bills. That ain't right to not discuss it with. Terrell's one of the supervisors, you mean, kind of?
In a way, yeah.
Yeah, in a way, and you are. So I mean, stop discussing with either one, yeah, I mean. I don't believe to reimburse them more. To use the city truck.
Right. I just didn't, I was waiting to see if one of you guys was going to have a question about it, but I did want to, I did want to let, you know, let you guys know what that was for. Because I had asked him to talk to Terrell and I said that if the city truck was not available, then we could look at the options for reimbursing him for mileage, but his first option was to try to take the city truck.
Yeah.
Well, Terrell?
Well, and we want to coordinate if we got to take samples in like that. To get, try to meet with somebody or get with somebody who's going to town, so we don't have already going there. We can pass it off to them. They can drop it off.
I think being an employee, I think he needs to be here to be able to defend himself. So just so you guys know, he took me and talked to me about this and I told him, or he agreed that in the future he's going to take the truck, so.
Well, that's not an, that's not an necessity. I just want to say that in the past, we just tried to coordinate. Take a day, go in town, the next day or two, we can meet up with somebody who's going to town to check in.
How much time do we have to get those in to after we take them?
It depends on the sample.
Yeah, for samples. This was, we tried to run the houses and got the samples.
The one that he took over doesn't really have a time limit because it was a copper and lead test of five specific houses on our water system. And since it's not something that's like a biological sample, since it's something that's more of a metallic, then they, it could have been two weeks before we got them in and the samples would have been fine.
Worst case scenario, I'm going to town three times a week.
The doctor was going to have it. Now I can put them under the patient.
I've taken give positive before, sorry. I'm a cog.
Has no public.
No public comment, so. Cassie Newton.
Yeah, yeah, come on over. Let's see here, okay. So there's your your two pages.
Yeah, sorry. She's my sidekick. No offense. I'm sidekick, I'm sorry. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Cassie Newton, the district manager for the Soil and Water Conservation District. And a place-based planning group, which is through Oregon Water Resources Department, was established long before my time with the district in 2016. And what that group is focused on is the Lower John Day, which is where we're at. Essentially from this side of Kimberley down to the confluence with the Columbia River. And part of that group was to establish, I guess a primary point of that group was to establish a water assessment for the Lower John Day. And through that, part of what they were assessing was municipal water needs. And I feel like the ball kind of got dropped because I feel like this is probably the first time you guys have heard about this. And this assessment has been going through five phases since 2016. And the plan itself, as far as, it's a really long title, but it's the Lower John Day Integrated Water Resources Plan, was approved and adopted by the State of Oregon's Water Commission last a year ago in May, so May of 22 or 23, excuse me. And what that did is it allowed us to move forward with implementing the needs that were identified within that plan. But one of the needs that was not elaborated on in that plan was the municipal water needs. And I don't know where the ball got dropped. The co-conveners, Herb Winters and Debbie Bunch, were kind of leading that, but they outsourced that to Anderson and Perry. And so they've been working to try to meet with each of the cities. And there's a handful of them that haven't been able to voice their needs or have their needs assessed. And Mitchell and Spray are two of those. And so a couple of months ago, I kind of jumped in and said that I was willing to come and present to you guys. I may not have all your answers because I kind of came into the tail end of the planning phase of this. But I will present what I know and let you guys see what they're assessing. And then we can talk about your needs that you want me to take back. And then at the end, we're going to talk about the September meeting for the Lower John Day as they want to come to Mitchell and have you guys present if you want, have a tour of the water system. If you're open to that, as well as have the SWCD provide insight on what we're doing on West Branch Bridge Creek. So this is not my slide deck. This is what Anderson Perry put together as they have been trying to meet with land or with cities. And so what they're trying to do is, as I just said, meet with each one of the municipalities within the lower watershed, including Morrow, Grass Valley, Condon, Lone Rock, Spray, Fossil and Mitchell. And the assessment objective is to evaluate the current condition of the community's water system, identify the system needs and deficiencies, and then provide guidance for any future conservation majors that could benefit your guys' water system, which would ultimately benefit the watershed as a whole. And when I say watershed, we're talking the Lower John Day watershed. So in this presentation, this was presented to the Lower John Day Working Group Committee by Anderson Perry. So it goes through all of them. I'm going to skip down to your guys' to show what they're looking for and we can flip back and forth. So what they know is not much. They don't know when the last water study was done, what the water supply sources or flow rates are, capacity, storage capacity, any water needs. And so to flip up, I think fossil they have quite a bit. So ultimately, this is what it would look like if they had a complete knowledge of what your guys' system is. And they're building a actual report that's narrative based. This is just a presentation, so I'm going to skip over to this sheet. And I met with Bree last week and we were able to fill in some of these blanks. Not all of them are filled in and I'm working on condensing what we found to be able to provide to Lower John Day. But what they would like to do is meet with you guys, if you guys have somebody or something that you would like to present, it doesn't matter who it is, then you're welcome to. They would provide a spot in the September 24th meeting for somebody to give a presentation. Or they could, you could present questions or anything that you need. And then they would like to tour the water system, and I know your guys' system is rather long. We're talking between 30 and 45 people. And generally what we do at the Lower John Day meetings is we'll meet at 10:00 in the morning and they generally go until 2:00. And so what they'll do is they'll have the meeting from about 10:00 to 11:30, 11:45. They'll break for lunch. And then the afternoon portion would be the site tour or project tour.
When was that, Cassie?
When?
Yeah.
September 24th.
Yeah.
It's a Tuesday.
And I think if I remember right, that's after our council meeting.
It is, I think.
Yeah, it's the week after our council meeting.
And so we have a couple of options. If that's a date that doesn't work for you guys, the Lower John Day alternates between virtual meetings and in-person meetings. So what we could do is I could go back in during the preparation for the meeting, I could say, hey, could we do this one virtual? And then do the Mitchell one at the next quarterly meeting. They're generally held the third Tuesday of, would that be the first quarter or first month in the quarter? And I'm open to any part that you guys need help with. I've been working with you guys or your water board, I should say, as far as a project goes with Ochaco's to get the cleanup around the spring done and some security done for you guys. So I'm happy to lead the tour. Generally, we will condense into the least amount of vehicles as possible. Bree did have an idea that we could just go up to the spring site itself. And your water board or whoever is comfortable could present at that spot and then maybe looking at the storage instead of traveling the whole stretch of your water system. But we are open to anything you guys don't have to decide tonight either. If you guys want to just work with Bree and come up with a plan and let me know what works best for you. I know it's short and it's not much information, but Bree does have these documents. She's able to send those out to you guys if you want to read into it a little further as far as the narratives go. But is there any questions that I can try and answer or take back with me?
So once this assessment is done and we, meeting of the minds and all that, I think this is open up grant opportunities for...
It does, yeah. So right now, the only grant funding that we have is more of assessment and research based. So they're doing some LiDAR up in Buell and 30 mile watersheds right now with some funding. And then the, we got additional funding to complete this municipality assessment, which right now as it sits, the assessment's supposed to be completed December 31st. I believe they have the ability to extend that out for those that can't get the information because as you guys are probably aware, a lot of times it's paper documents that people are having to go through and look up. I know that Spray is like that. And so we do have the opportunity to have an extension on that, but what it does is it opens up the ability for us to go after grant funding as a place-based planning group. And so it's stronger in the sense that there's multiple agencies that are a part of the Lower John Day group versus just the SWCD going after funding. One opportunity that it opens up in particular, and don't ask me what the acronym is because we all know that we like to use acronyms, but it's ARPA funding and it's a water resource funding opportunity. And you have to have a place-based planning group in, established in order to access that. And that's the funding that is paying for the LiDAR and the assessment right now. And so that's one option. But that funding, we are looking at going after additional funding and it does include on-the-ground work. But what it will also do is it will strengthen, even you guys as a city can say, hey, we have this plan. We were involved in the assessment. Here's the data that we have and it can strengthen any water grant that you guys go after as well. In fact, that's why I was snagging pictures of your guys' board over here because anything like that, the grant committees eat up. Any historical information that you can provide, photos, any past work completed, they really like to see that. And so utilizing those photos on that board in the water system grant with Ochaco's is what my plan is.
You've been up there to the springs then before, right?
I personally have not, no. Unfortunately, I was not able to make it to the site visit. But on Thursday, I have a meeting with Ochaco's as part of that grant planning.
Yeah, glad we's up there. No, and I don't know if it's a concern. I think it's just an FYI. I think that's the last weekend of the bow season. There's all our owners up there. They might not like it.
Work around.
Yeah, but again, work around if that's good, yeah.
Yeah, when we were talking about the entire, taking the entire length of the, you know, the pipeline. I know Terrell and I have discussed, there's a couple of spots that you can't get through with a vehicle, not effectively, like at all. Like you would need like a side-by-side or a four-wheeler to get through it. And so I didn't really figure that that would be feasible for their field trip, so.
I think it would be a good opportunity just to see the site, the spring sites, especially because you guys are in a phase that's a before phase because we're seeking funding to clean those up for you and put the security in. It would be a neat opportunity to present where the system is at now. And then once we're able to implement that grant funding, if we're able to secure it, then you guys can, or even I can present photos after photos of saying, hey, look, this is what it looks like now. Did you have your hand raised?
No, I was gonna say, unless everybody wanted to hike from the springs down. I wouldn't suggest at this time.
Not a lot to see other than air vents.
Yeah, typical track.
And the other opportunity that I mentioned to Bree too is we don't have to do a field trip. I know you guys have photos of the spring sites and I have a plotter printer at the district's office that we can print a big map and I know that folks worked with Terrell and the water board and we have GPS points of the springs and I can work with you guys and we can map it out on a big map and we can just present it as a presentation too. That's an option if preferred.
We just had a trip up there recently, like a month ago.
Did you guys go all the way around or did you go through Gordon?
Went through Gordon.
That's when ODFNW came, right?
Yeah.
Stefan.
The one you couldn't make it to.
Yeah, yeah, that was for the Ochaco National Forest Grant that we're writing. And I believe my staff took pictures too, so we have some.
There's quite a few agencies up there.
Yeah.
You guys have any questions for Cassie?
No, I don't think so. This sounds like something we should definitely look at, yeah.
Yeah.
I wasn't aware that we haven't had any kind of an assessment, you know, of that, of that nature, so. Yeah, it's good to get on there and like you said, it strengthens our position with funding too. I mean, we some of that system is a little antarctic.
Yeah, and just for your guys' knowledge too, beyond the Lower John Day group, the SWCD moved their focus area into Bridge Creek this past year, which the focus area, it's through Oregon Department of Ag and it's focused on ag water quality. But what that does is it allows us to focus funding into Bridge Creek. Now, the SWCD is Now, the SWCD um is more focused on West Branch Bridge Creek at the moment, we're doing a full assessment of that whole sub watershed. But we chose to make the focus area Bridge Creek as a whole. Because it opened up the funding opportunities to the whole Bridge Creek watershed. And um we'll be able, and that's part of why you guys had so many agencies on that site visit. Is we're trying to bring those other agencies in to get that funding into Bridge Creek. And um which will strengthen not just the city's water, but the whole um watershed as a whole. Any other questions, comments? Well, thank you guys for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you, Cassie.
Thanks, Cassie. Any more discussion about that, you guys?
No, I said, I think that's a wonderful, don't want to get us down on the deep end.
Any of the council members who haven't been up to the spring, they should actually look at the spring, be aware of what's up there.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's been years since I've been up there. Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, we got uh some monthly reports you guys can look through there and yeah, any of them that you'd like to discuss and. We've seen in Terrell's, he's addressing some of the tree stuff that we had budgeted for.
Yeah, as far as I know, uh the company contacted, won't be able to get a Mitchell. Uh, till sometime in October.
Looks like dead ones and a couple diners, though. There's another tree service I saw in the spring, I took a picture of everything I can give you their number and stuff. I've seen them over there cutting some stuff around the fairgrounds. I mean, I guess we we can, it just seems to be, I mean, insurance-wise, we would need to have like a professional.
Yeah.
Tree fallers.
Yeah, you need to get up there and pop them first because uh went down here at the forest, very reliable to uh. Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you guys.
Uh, some of the other ones we can do ourselves and I didn't mention those to the uh one of the treatment.
But also like you, I think we talked about this a couple of meetings ago, um we don't need to pay to have them haul it off or anything, you can.
No, we can haul, we have, we can haul.
Have rolling tires or that sort of deal. Come, come pick it up for firewood. Do you like burning cotton wood?
I think there's nothing, right?
Um, in in my report. Um, I wrote that the computer, City Hall's kind of been acting up. And I realized when I was trying to do an update on it the other day, it has a note on it that says. This PC doesn't currently meet the minimum system requirements to run Windows eleven. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that it's kind of getting to be. I don't know what exactly the deal is with it, but it's just old, I think.
It seems, seems like we bought that computer when Sandra was still there.
It froze up when I was trying to restart, when I was trying to update it and restart it, it froze up for like forty-five minutes the other day. A good thing that I have my laptop because otherwise I wouldn't have nothing to work on.
It seems, it seems to me like that computer was was actually originally a Windows seven computer. And they upgraded to Windows ten like they let you do and.
Yeah.
Now it's leather and.
That was the end of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's five hundred bucks a computer.
It's gonna be expensive and I don't want to have to do that, but if, you know.
What else can you do?
Right, and if it does act, end up crashing and like I said, it can't even run the newest update of Windows, which I think is probably part of the performance issues with it.
And it's not like our fire department, they don't have, they don't have the income coming in, but our fire can keep working. And what do we do? Die on the computer.
Yeah.
So we make a resolution and we take it out of LGIP that are our other account, we just take the resolution of the city council to give it.
Well, it depends upon how much it is, something like that because. Um, it's much like any other office supply, it gets split between several different accounts for paying for it. It comes out of like the water fund, the general fund, the ambulance fund, the fight, like, you know, every, it gets, because it all. It deals with all, all the departments, so um. Yeah, something like that gets taken out of a lot of different accounts.
Well, can you uh, are you looking at the cost of replacing it and present it to council? What your needs would be and looking into the future too, so we're not having to replace it in a year or something.
Yeah.
Thing is, though, I mean, what what is she supposed to do if it's all the streets open and she can't use it anymore?
I've been backing up stuff, um.
Or are we gonna want to have a special, a special meeting at some time, maybe to approve whatever you find, so that way if you have it and. Don't have to worry about you not being able to do what you need to do.
Well, I have been backing a lot of stuff up, um. I have the option for uh Google Drive, which is, you know, a cloud-based one. Um, but I also have a one terabyte um hard drive. Or uh.
External.
External hard drive, it's a one terabyte, so it's going, it's bigger one, um. And I've been backing up QuickBooks onto that, saving the QuickBooks backups onto that, so that if that, something like that does happen, then.
Don't have the, all the information.
Yeah, yeah. And I have, I've backed up some other, a few other things onto that hard drive as well, you know, certain files and stuff, but. Just because it does act up sometimes, so I've been making sure that I back the things up, so that if it hap, if it does happen, we don't lose everything.
Seems, seems like that computer was about right around two thousand and ten.
Well, when it won't even run the newest version of Windows, you know it's old because my, my personal laptop is like that. And I've had that personal laptop of mine for nine or ten years now and that won't even run Windows eleven, so.
Yep.
But anyway, so that's that, well, uh.
Well, I mean, yeah, are you guys wanna address it?
Have you checked any prices?
I haven't yet, no, um. It was just like, I think it was Wednesday that it started acting up on me, like really bad, like when it froze up when I was trying to reboot it and. Um, I uh haven't really had an opportunity to research any prices since.
You, are you, you are, you kind of, you kind of already know exactly what you're gonna need as far as.
No, but I can look at what the hard drive is in there, like the, how big it is. Cause that one is obviously sufficient enough to hold everything that it already has on it and so I can look at, I'd have to look at the memory and see. How much is left and see if something that same size would work or if I would need to go a little bigger.
I'd go a little bit bigger.
Yeah, I would.
Well, it's a little while we're getting bigger.
Yeah, no, always growing.
Yeah, yeah, and we have to save everything.
You, you can get up to, I think, sixteen terabytes if you needed it. I don't need, probably need something that big for.
It's not gonna be gaming in there.
No, no.
No, but I don't think you understand how many thousands of files are in that thing.
Yeah.
Like when we go to transfer it over, we're gonna initiate it on like a Thursday night and we're gonna let it run and hopefully it'll be done by Tuesday.
Well, maybe we can get a couple of hard drives, so the computer we get, whatever it can take. But some of the stuff that does not need to be on some of it, that we can put on hard drives. And just, you know, store some of the back stuff that you don't use all the time.
The city has a couple, um, one of them. Is not very big and then the one terabyte that uh I'd gotten when I first got here. Just so that I could make sure that I could keep everything backed up, like the QuickBooks and important things like that.
Yeah, cause that's what I've got for my business, I end up after so many years of certain files that I have to keep. I've got them on hard drives and then I have my fresh stuff that I'm working with.
That's a pretty good idea.
So you're not having to have everything on the one that you're doing.
Right.
Then you can have dates on it and go, okay, I need to pull this one.
Yeah, this year, this year information, you know.
Okay, so yeah, that's all I've got.
Any more uh discussion about the monthly reports?
Glenn, as the fire chief, were you gonna get on that paper this month?
Yeah, I, I did, I did the oral, I'm not. We've had several calls in the last week or so, a couple of weeks actually. Um, and then I, I have such a damn, was a couple of nights, but anyway, uh. Continuing to have our monthly, your five monthly meetings and they, they have uh. Been all of them, but I took them out and they're gonna use them for others, for excuse reasons. Um, seems like where they are trained, those are the wrong issues, you're learning. Because always I, I'm still have my, my viewers up trying to get more, more people to join. Um, I guess I can pop it up the fire truck through my report, I guess, and.
Yeah.
Um, and all the trucks are running great except for one, um, but I had. I went down, went down to go on a call and the batteries were good, so we ended up taking, taking a dinner truck, a little brush truck. Um, so we, we came back after the call and sat there and jump-started it and. Took an hour to get it to jump-start, finally jump-started it and I ran it for a couple of hours and, and actually about three hours. And uh took it back down to the hall, hall and, and uh. When it started, let it start, fly left, fly down, three days, four days later, I was down for a call and it fired right up.
You say, is it on a charging?
Yes, it's on, it's on a triple burger.
It's on a triple.
Yeah, it's supposed to, supposed to, the batteries pop up. Anyway, so uh it went on two or three runs and then went to another run and let it start. So they took it, took it up a different truck, so. Anyway, both of the batteries were, the batteries, last battery was pretty good since two thousand and nine. No, two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and fifteen was last battery. For the installments, those nine years, usually batteries last five to seven years. Now, so anyway, um, thought the batteries would fix it, but it didn't. So this, at nighttime, during the daytime, I run the brake and charge it like it's supposed to, because I'm not running all the. All the headlights and all that stuff, but at nighttime, when I had a call up in the beginning of three hundred dollars the other night. And I know this, this was all the lamp on, just started, so. It's either a voltage regulator or alternator or a flipping goal.
Something's going on.
I was gonna say, you had a battery load test and that was. Yeah, I, I had the battery testing, it tested bad.
Load test.
Yeah, load testing, it tested bad, yeah.
Yeah, cause also.
Yeah, they told me, they told me, yeah. And I, I did a little look up on, on all fours and they, it tested bad, I was waiting.
Okay, yeah, but they, they load test it back in this stuff, when it's probably.
Yeah.
Too many people just like that with voltage.
Cause they coincident, it's, it's, they coincident with the fault that happened at the same time, I'm pretty sure, I mean.
Yeah. How many, uh, in there, four in there?
Four, yeah.
I think I, we can discuss this more in our new business.
Yeah, anyway, other than that, there's, there's nothing else really going on. Oh, one more thing, I do have one more thing, I have uh, Heather Goller from, from the uh. State Fire Marshal office, and they come to the K adult and sit the booth with us and that stuff. So.
Okay, John, are you, are you gonna have a booth there?
Well, I can do one better, I got a helicopter.
I'm not being talking about it.
Well, they just emailed me two points ago after months of bugging up and now Emily wants to bring her chopper.
I'll be, yeah, it's gonna be pretty cool, we're gonna try to bring them in right over town, you know, and.
Yeah.
Not blow everybody's hats off and then send them out and stand up to life, right now is the plan, so probably just have it down for a couple of hours.
Okay.
But they'll kind of in an obvious dynamic display, like on some swag and stuff, so.
Like I told y'all, I, I volunteer for doing some of these.
Yeah, that's one thing I gotta look at, we've got to, after the break, we've got to rope off a very big area and keep people out of it, so.
Yeah.
Sit down.
Yep.
You know, and that lane and build security and all that good stuff and point of contact, there's quite a bit into it, but it looks like it's gonna be a go, so. I wish you had given a little point. I've been on for two months about that, just crickets, nothing. So we want to send our chopper up for that, oh, okay. Really cool, but I think we'll make it, we're gonna have the ambulance stand there also and uh pass it.
So I can decide what if you get, get, you know, like a tanker fly over across. T one thirty.
Yeah. Well, that's it on discussion of the monthly reports, we move on to correspondence, which.
There's one this month.
Have anything this month, so some quick updates, would you, would you like to?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna kind of switch things around a little bit because I'll talk about. A, after I talk about B, we'll start with B. So um with the R, R three and the Catalyst Group um based out of John Day. They have been really working hard on our behalf to get some uh different things in place. So that when we're able to actually move forward with the Sutton Rec area and um that. That area up there, the golden triangle, I suppose, um, we can have some things in order. And one of them is we have Shelby here out of Triangle with GeoTerra. He is doing some survey work dotted around, there's a map included in there, the areas and the points that he's been hitting. It's literally gonna cover the entire part of Mitchell and then it's gonna kind of bottleneck down and then it'll open up and cover. The whole golden triangle area and so he came in last night, he started his work today. And uh the work that he's doing is going to be overlaid over uh an older. Um, LiDAR mapping that was done for the area, about half the cost of what the newer. You know, brand-new technology is, but I feel like it'll still meet or exceed expectations and the result of it is gonna be that we're gonna have a. Um, a pretty, a more comprehensive map, terrain map of the area, the city, all the way up. That'll come in helpful if Hashknife still wants to move forward with their, their, their thing there too, all the mapping that we can get out of it, it could be really cool. Really cool thing, so I'm really excited and so I invited him to come join us and maybe tell you guys a little bit of, about how his survey work works.
I saw your text, eleven after five, I'm gonna.
I know, I was late in.
Really have no presentations, so I guess more of maybe question and answer, but we have um. So the process is, is we have to set down some ground control points and um there's ten of them, they got a white cross on for some sort of a. Some sort of one, so up here at the school, it's into the heart, you know, obviously existing paint lines, I've got a stop bar on it. Old highway or something over there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then the ones kind of out and about, yeah, cross it on. And uh so I've got to use seven out of the ten done today. And um, so I'm gonna, those get laid down. And then um we have um a survey amen, so they got a latitude longitude height on. And then we'll be flying uh Millie Amadry and then overlaying that on using the old LiDAR and then we're gonna combine it to. I think the LiDAR is from.
Twenty seventeen.
Yeah, and I don't know who did that, we did not do it, but it's public to available, so we're gonna use it. And uh that's kind of the process, and just running around doing that, it'll probably finish on Thursday, I'm guessing, so. Um, everything's going pretty good, I was just all the way up at the top of the triangle when I saw your text.
Yeah, I was a little late in re- remembering to message you too, was, I was setting up for the meeting and I was like, shoot, I totally meant to say something earlier.
Well, I knew the meeting was made, but I.
Yeah.
And so uh, yeah, I was all the way at that far point up there on the logging road, so.
Yeah.
Going good, uh haven't had any issues, everybody just waiting, nobody's yelled at me, so.
I found out about this within the last couple of weeks and so it kind of moved rather quickly and so. Um, within a matter of a few days, I ended up having to get ahold of Hashknife Branch. Um, within a matter of a few days, I ended up having to get ahold of Hashknife Ranch, YB Ranch. And go through the map to make sure that there were no other property owners that I need to get ahold of so that he could do his job without getting disturbed because there's a couple of points that were right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It hasn't happened in a while, I have that map with, you know, guys packing up, so.
Yeah.
They're not happy to see me. But, um, anyway, so that's, that's it, um. And, you know, I'm just by myself running around doing it and, um.
So what's the scope of the whole survey then, I mean, like as far as where you're accomplishing this, just for everybody that may not be aware of what LiDAR is?
Oh, um, so LiDAR is, um, it stands for light, see, light, image, light detection, so basically, it's. So we did, we're not doing that, but it was done, it bounces a laser off the ground and it basically creates a three D model of the ground. And then we're doing new imagery, uh. I wanna say it's like half foot pixel, maybe it's a quarter foot, anyway, so that's just the pixel size on the imagery, so it'll be digital imagery. And we'll be acquiring that when we get a clear day, I mean, I get done with my, I mean, actually after tomorrow, like clear day, we can, we can do it. And so we'll, we're at that, so the plane will come out of, um, our planes are based out of Aurora. And so they'll fly over and grab it and, um.
Oh, so this isn't a drone, it's an actual.
Oh, yeah.
Fixed wing here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, I have a drone in the truck, we'll have to use it.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I take promo pictures with it and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so yeah, so this is a fixed wing.
Yeah, so we'll have.
Oh, okay, okay.
It'll be a, it'll be a assessment two ten, it's in the gym.
So you have a little plane flying around, you're good. Yeah.
But, uh, we cover all, so, you know, we're a company based out of Eugene, I live in Bryanville, one of the owners and, um.
Okay.
We do stuff all over the Northwest and we're, I think it was yesterday before, we piqued a sound, we're, we're almost up to Canada, we're flying some kelp from the. From the Department of Natural Resources.
Oh, okay.
I was in Cottage Grove two weeks ago, the, the city Cottage Grove is doing a sonar project, um, you know, basically we have. Survey equipment airplane for hire, so we go all over the Northwest.
Okay.
So, um.
That's interesting, yeah, it's always interesting cuz you, you know, this, it's, it's something that your average Joe doesn't hear much about, I guess.
True.
Probably title, you know. Yeah, that's, that is pretty cool, yeah.
It's a pretty small fraternity of people, then we're the biggest Northwest-based company doing that, we have thirty people, we have a Boise office, um, Portman and Eugene. So, and a couple of people work from home, I'm one of them. I refuse to move to Eugene.
Yeah. So, a couple of them, uh, the LiDAR stuff, I am like a documentary junkie, especially like ancient documentaries, like. About ancient things and so I don't know what, what the LiDAR technology, what year, what, you know, version they were using in some of this. Uh, these recent ones that I've watched, but I'll tell you what, some of the things that these things can do for mapping stuff is absolutely incredible. Like there's this one that I watched where they sent the LiDAR stuff out and they literally were able to see through the canopy of a rainforest with this imagery. And find, uh, you know, like, shapes that obviously were not nature-made, anything that's in a square or a rectangle is man-made. And they were literally able to find ancient Mayan cities just based on picking up that, you know, that. That work in the ground from the technology, cuz it actually like bounces through the canopy of the trees and they never would have been able to find these things. Without that and so then they would just pinpoint the spot on the map and they'd go trucking out through the jungle and there's a whole Mayan city. It's just so cool, the type of stuff that those, that the LiDAR technology is capable of, so. I'm really excited to see the terrain mapping that we can gain out of it.
So it's basically the same tech as in twenty seventeen, but it's probably, you know, if we had it done new, it'd probably be better resolution, we'll be, things. Kind of, but it's basically the same and they haven't done too much of that particularly for Rollins, but we did a project for ODOT down by Pine. Where they were looking for some old wagon road, like Pioneer wagon road, I don't know if they were funded or not, they did the analysis.
Yeah, you can find it with that stuff cuz they were finding maps, you know, like of the old roads and stuff, of how they would go through the cities.
So I mean, for here, I mean, you'll have brand new imagery, it'll be as of the date of the flight, which, you know, will probably be this month sometime, so.
Yeah.
Whenever it clears up, so, um, but anyway, yeah, that's, that's what we do, you know, if anybody's having any questions, um, you know, I can try to answer them, but. I got zero presentation, I was driving down here ten minutes.
Yeah, no, I know. Um, uh, and all of this, you know, that presentation that we had with the Catalyst Group and they were saying that all of this funding that they can get for helping us out, it's all paid for by that. They got the funding through the regional rural revitalization thing and they're doing this on our behalf and so I find that to be really awesome and. I'm really excited to be able to have this for the city.
And it, and you're right, it's pretty fast and, you know, it comes over Cottage Grove two weeks ago and then, you know, the office is calling and going. You know, asking me some questions about coming out here and, um. And at the time, I'm kind of thinking, this, I don't know, someone's just shopping for a grant or whatever and I'm like, we're gonna meet, they're like, you gotta sign my work. So, okay, I'll be back next week.
Yeah, so that's.
So you, you know, did move pretty fast enough, you know, it's fine.
Yeah, yeah, so yeah, that's that update.
Thanks Shelby.
Yep.
And then if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you don't, you want to, you can, you can listen if you choose to, um.
I hope I take off, so I was actually, well, it kind of started raining, I was actually gonna go do, um, a couple of performances down.
Yeah.
At the first Bryanville, but, um, so I'm gonna go see what it's like out there.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate you stopping in.
Good to see you Shelby.
I'm like, what are you doing here? So I actually went to high school with him.
Oh, what, oh, yeah.
So you moved over here an hour?
Definitely, we're retired three years ago and bought a house.
Last time you were in Coos Bay or someplace.
Yeah, I tried to retire from.
Yeah, yeah, we actually live on, we did live on the same street at Bryanville, so.
Oh, so you, were you the same class as my Aunt Jerry too?
Yes.
Yeah, too.
Jerry, Jerry Bouchard.
Oh, yeah. It's all a pretty small world. Cuz I thought you were still on the coast.
Oh, retired three years ago.
Retired and, you know, volunteering for the city Mitchel, huh?
Yep.
All right, well, good for you, anyway, good seeing you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have some, a couple more that don't require some discussion here, uh, civic class, agree?
Yeah, so, um, I actually have a Zoom meeting tomorrow to go through, um, some of the. The things that they've been working on, so I'll have a little bit more information for you soon, but things are, uh, going, moving forward. I was able to get the guy that's working on the website, actually building it, um, some information off of the website that Pat Farrell had built. So that all, a lot of the stories and the literature and some of the photos and things like that can be lifted and brought onto our new, our new website. And so, um, that's really exciting, I'll know a little bit more tomorrow, um, after the Zoom meeting as to. To where everything's at on that, but it's all moving forward. Um, and then the community hall roofing project, thanks to the mayor and to Kailene for her suggestion the last time and, uh, the last meeting. Um, and one other local, Stan, his nephew does roofing, we have enough votes to be able to send out the, the proposals for bid for the roof project. So I'm really excited for that, um, we hit our three and then some, so that's really awesome, um, and then. We'll be able to start moving forward with that into the project and hopefully get this thing working on and maybe possibly done by the time winter hits really hard. I know it's gonna have to happen really quick, but. So, yeah, so there's that, so now that I'm not having to deal with getting ready for the council meeting tomorrow, I'll be sending out. Those bid proposal paperwork via email to the contacts that I have, so, stay tuned.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to some old business, the resolution accepting the canvas of votes from May twenty first, primary election, um, new charter. We tabled this till today, um, you guys have an opportunity to go through and check everything out? So. I found quite a few typos in here that are significant.
I didn't make it, this was sent to me by Jared.
Yeah, oh, I know, uh, I'm just gonna, I was just gonna say, like, some of these are real significant, like, uh. Um, and I probably should have brought this up before this, but I hadn't actually, I caught one typo and I started looking through and there's some. There's some major things wrong with this.
Well, some of that can be adjusted and fixed, they are editable for me, so, uh, before we actually like, as long as you agree with. The overall verbiage on it, the little typos can be easily adjusted before we actually put it in the, in the book.
Yeah. Um, one thing I wanted council to consider too, if you look on here, it's, um. Or, uh, section twenty eight, that is something that's new, so, and you go right below that, section twenty nine. It doesn't really talk about, um, it'd be kind of redundant at this point cuz it does say ceasing to possess the qualifications for office. So let's say someone gets in here and then they sell their property or. Sell their business or move from out of town, that, that sort of thing, it's kind of under that. So I don't know if it'd be redundant if we put in, you know, about that part. Changing the charter here for the.
I feel like removal of residency from the city or ceasing to possess the qualifications for the office would be. And that's what.
Yeah, so I just wanna consider that, but, um. Oh, and then there's something in here that really needs to be taken out, the section forty three, it's on the last page. Says timing effective chargers, they're talking about the March nineteen eighty-eight elections, so we need to take that out or. Rewrite that to the, cuz if you look within our charter, I mean, this is kind of like a back doorway that this happened, a petition was filed. Got enough signatures on the petition to have it included in the, uh, state election, so then it's kind of a back doorway, if you look at the way our charter is written. Usually the council presents it and then it goes to the electors, so it does fit within all the statutes, I believe, I mean, this one went through a bit, wouldn't have, but, um. We just, if we're approving this whole deal right here today, we need to address all this, cuz I mean, there's. They're, they're talking about the road stuff in here, um, and it just doesn't make any sense, it's like somebody just started. Flirting things out there, there, I think that they did was copy and paste this from, you know, there's, they take an old document and put stuff in there, but. Like their, section thirty three, they're talking about the thirteenth day after enactment, it's supposed to be the thirtieth day.
Well, so, really quick, going back to the section forty three, to me, in reading that, isn't that when, is that when, that's when Mitchell. Like became incorporated, right, it was nineteen?
No, Mitchell's been incorporated for a hundred and thirty-two years, this is, uh, when the last time that it was revised, the charter.
Yeah, oh, okay. So it was.
So I mean, if you pay Jared for this, he needs to redo this without charting us to redo this, cuz I mean, there's.
Make it right, well, he had it.
Yeah, I mean, you look in the road, try reading that last couple of sentences in the section thirty eight, it just doesn't make any sense. I, I should have caught this earlier, but it was the, just reading the section six where they're talking about Al's powers. Al powers of the city, stuff like that, you know.
A lot of them didn't further put the change was, was the factor, now people do own property within, within the city, or like, or live outside the city. And, uh, for office.
Yeah, and that's, uh, addressed in section twelve and section twenty eight.
Adoption of Jay, they changed them.
Yeah, why did they change the whole thing when it, when all that depends on the double plus?
Well, then we change also in section twelve here for you can't be a, a relative spouse, significant other, her housemate, newly elected officer, so going officers.
I like that idea though.
Yeah.
That was, that was in the, that they voted on.
That was in there also, really, that was put up too. I guess, I mean, I, I can't, I don't see anything in our charter that really talked about, like how we go about changing it, I don't think we need to, we could. More piecemeal it to just include those sections, that, that would be the actual change and, you know, cuz. I mean, if you're reading it this way, if you guys approve this, we, we would just put all that in there, you know, in the new charter.
I think we just need to change the section twelve and twenty eight. Of the original charter as it stands. I don't think we need to rewrite the whole dang thing.
And they, they changed the, if you look at the title too, it used to be Mitchell City Charter and they changed it to City and Mitchell Charter. So I mean, there's just a lot of things in here that just don't jive with the old charter.
I, I agree that, that there's quite a bit of stuff in the, in the old charter that you, that doesn't change, but I think we need to try to.
Well, this was probably been like, she said, what is it, twelve and twenty eight, Kathy?
Twelve, yes, twelve and twenty eight and all that, you know, changes, those are the only two I read.
Yeah, that's the only changes.
The changes that I've noticed going through.
I don't agree with her, but I agree all of it, just those aren't long.
There's, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't have time to like dig them.
I should have done it sooner, I brought it up to Bree, so it could have been addressed before this meeting, we do have a deadline, so you guys do know August. Twenty eighth is the filing, or August.
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh, everybody knows this is coming up quick, it's a week away, so.
Oh, to file.
If anybody wanted to file from out of town, like the one and dog or something like that, um. I just want everybody to know this is gonna end up happening, we just have to have the.
The.
Everything right, like, right, you know, right now I couldn't appoint anybody from out of town until we approved this, that sort of deal, but, um.
Yeah.
It will be done, we just have to maybe get this more abbreviated where it's only changing that part of it, or if they're gonna. Write out the whole charter, we just need to make these changes, I went through it and I found like seven typos and then some major stuff, so. We need to make exactly the same except for section twelve and.
One year.
Yeah. Do we need to make a motion on that, uh, that we only changed section twelve and twenty eight of the charter to adapt to this?
No, I think we could just tell Bree to, or, sorry, not tell Bree, ask Bree to speak with Jared about. He the, he could be, he knows our charter, he's got our charter, so see, we want to make sure we do this right, you know, um.
And maybe just for now, twelve and twenty eight, and then we.